The September ninth meeting of the Harwich Planning Board. My name is Duncan Berry. I'm the planning, the chair of the board. And I have to inquire if anybody is seeking to record this evening, please let me know. I see nobody. So I declare the meeting open at six thirty-three. I would invite you all to join me by standing and reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This evening, we start with a continued public hearing from April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five, May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, June twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, which is an administrative continuance from July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five. Case number PB two thousand and twenty-five dash zero-nine, Jeff Lang and Sandra Wykoff. Owners through David J. Crispin, PE of BSC Group Incorporated, agent, seek approval for a site plan review special permit. The proposed project is to construct a ninety-three space parking lot and perimeter pedestrian path. The application is pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich, section three twenty-five dash fifty-five, three twenty-five dash fifty-one, and Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Sections nine and eleven. Property is located at three ninety-seven Route twenty-eight, Assessor's Map thirteen, parcel D dash one, and the parcel is approximately one hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight square feet. Parcel is in the commercial highway one, CH one, and residential high-density one, RH one zoning districts. The applicant has requested to withdraw without prejudice. I'd like to entertain a motion to that effect, if I may.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, I so declare it. We now move on to the second public hearing of the evening. Continued public hearing from August twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five, case number PB two thousand and twenty-five dash nineteen, Davenport Realty Trust, through their agent, Paul R. Tardif Esquire, seeks approval for a multifamily use special permit and a site plan review special permit. The proposed project is to convert an existing commercial slash office condominium structure into a ten-unit multifamily residential structure with no exterior changes to the building. The application is pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich, section three twenty-five dash fifty-one, three twenty-five dash fifty-five, Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Sections nine and eleven. Property is located at seventy-two Route twenty-eight, Assessor's Map ten, parcel F six, and the parcel is approximately thirty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-one square feet. Parcel is in the commercial highway one, CH one, and residential medium-density RM zoning districts and the West Harwich Special District. Mr. Tardif.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just again, I'm Paul Tardif. I'm an attorney in Yarmouth Port and represent the Davenport Companies. This is a continued matter from August twelfth, and as you indicated, we are seeking to reuse a, an existing building built in approximately nineteen eighty-nine into ten small units, eight one-bedroom units and two studio units located at seventy-two Route twenty-eight. The, when we last met on August twelfth, some of the neighbors were spoken, spoke regarding concerns that they had about the project. Some mentioned the fact that we were providing forty parking spaces where fifteen were required. Others talked about the concrete patio space for the recreation in the rear, but mostly speakers indicated this was not the place for housing of this type. I heard at least four people indicate that the housing of this type is not needed along Route twenty-eight, and it's not prescribed in the zoning district in which the property sits. I do want to address some of those, if that's all right.
Please.
First, smaller rentals are absolutely needed, not only on the Cape, but also in Harwich. As you know, the Davenport Companies provide a large number of rentals in the town of Harwich, as well as in other towns on the Cape. They've been in business for almost seventy years and understand the market, which includes the need for housing. By last count, the Davenport's own and pay taxes on at least eighty units in the town of Harwich alone, of all sizes and locations. They have determined that the one-bedroom units and the studios are desirable and needed for this market. They have, in other places, created developments that have four bedrooms for rent, multiple four bedrooms for rent, because that is the need in that location. So the applicant is pretty savvy at understanding what the market needs and has been very, very good about providing it. But I would also refer you to the Housing Production Plan for the Town of Harwich, which was published in March of this year. Pretty big publication here. That comprehensive document outlines the housing problem, the challenges facing the town and addressing those issues, and also possible solutions. One key, it states, is to incentivize greater density for development, that multifamily development is a reasonable option to take advantage of, to repurpose existing buildings. It also recites that single individual households have increased in the last fifteen years, and that encourages smaller housing, which has been diminished over the last years with the removal of small cottages. Harwich has also lost renter occupied units by twenty-six percent from two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty-one, and that's lower than the Cape Cod average. And finally, the Housing Production Plan encourages the creation of denser development in commercial areas and village centers. I do have a letter from Jean Sennett, who's a Realtor with Keller Williams, who also supports the creation of smaller housing, in her estimation as a Realtor. But getting back to the property itself, and since our last meeting, we have revised the plan in a few ways. We expanded the community patio space to double its size and to be a grassed area. In the process of doing that, we've eliminated six parking spaces to reduce the plan to thirty-four spaces and have maintained the existing lot coverage from what's there now. I also spoke to my client about his intentions regarding the rental of units, because I know there was some concern about short-term rentals, and there's no plan to use them for short-term rental. And in fact, the board wants to include a condition, there'll be no rentals of less than thirty-one days. That's acceptable to the applicant. There's also some question about lighting on the property. Again, our intention is to have lighting in the parking lot, but low, not those long, tall poles. We're also planning on using almost onion lights, onion lamps, such as these, that have a piece that can be added to make sure that the light stays on the property and does not shine into neighboring properties. The poles are the typical poles that you'd see in a residential setting, and they're just set up so that the lights would just be below the fence, and that way, we can tell, you know, we can see where the parking spaces are without shining a lot of light to anyone else. So it's more of a residential application. I would like to address some of the other general comments that were made regarding housing in Harwich. The multifamily projects proposed in three zoning districts. The commercial highway one, which is, allows multifamily housing by special permit, residential medium zoning district, which allows multi, multi-housing by special permit, and West Harwich Special District, which also allows multifamily projects by special permit. I think we already outlined why the project fits with the requirements of the multifamily use. I don't know if you want me to go through that again, but I believe that the staff report covers it clearly and that we fall squarely into all three of those requirements under chapter three twenty-five fifty-one, fifty-five, if I can get to it, and one fifty-four as well. What I would like to do is provide some additional information about the former and existing use of this property. I think it'll shed a little light on what we're trying to do and why it's going to be a more advantageous project than what is there currently. I would like to introduce Matt Kelly, who is one of the owners of the condos that used to be in that building. If he could maybe come up and give us a little background on that, is that all right, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Thank you, Attorney Tardif, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Matt Kelly. I am the president currently of the West Harwich Office Park Association as it currently exists. We authorized, obviously, Attorney Tardif on behalf of Davenport to make application for the proposal before you now. Attorney Tardif, mention this, and I'll sort of give you a little history quickly of the building. The building was constructed, as Attorney Tardif said, in the late eighties. It's not really important to talk about what happened there for thirty years. It's a bunch of lawyers, accountants, professional services. It's never been any other use than that. At the time of July two thousand and twenty-three, which I'll talk about in a minute, there was about seven practicing attorneys in the building, taking up three offices. There were two accounting firms, home health, financial services, some medical services, A-one exterminators, a local extermination service. So, you know, sort of a cross-section of professionals. I think there's never, I think it's important to note that that space has never occupied as a retail space, as far as I've known it. It's never occupied as a restaurant, never food service, anything that sort of had a forward-facing function to the community. And I bring that up because there was a lot of comments about the need for certain commercial spaces. It's never been that. It's been a building that people come and seek our services and then leave. In July of two thousand and twenty-three, the building suffered sort of a catastrophic event. It was a Saturday morning. We were all not there. It was the start of the Fourth of July week, and we received a phone call that a sprinkler had burst up on the second floor, rendering the building out of commission, and it's been that way ever since. Obviously, pretty detrimental, not really for your concern, but pretty detrimental to the nine separate business owners, small business owners, that lived in town, have not been able to be back in that building. We've all relocated to different positions. We've all continued to run our businesses. We are, in all respects, local people. I went to Harwich High School, raised my kids, who attend school locally. I think several of the business owners there, and you'll hear from a couple others, are local residents, and we didn't take this path lightly. We examined lots of other options. We talked to contractors, talked about rebuilding the office space, but ultimately, cost, insurance, all the things that go along with reconstructing a building weren't super feasible for a bunch of lawyers to do. So, you know, I'll defer on the particulars of the project, but there are a couple of things that I think I can shed light on. We, at the height, I would say, on a daily basis, between the nine units, there was roughly somewhere between thirty-five and forty employees working at the building. That's about four per unit. I think that's fair. Some offices maybe had five, some had a few less. Every single person drove to that building every single day, and I think that's important to note in traffic. Before you even get to the crux of the people, I mean, I'd see four clients a day. I know Jim, my former law partner, several a day. Attorney Ford, certainly a busy law office. This was a well, well-traveled building, people in and out, and in and out. So it's hard for me to imagine the argument that nine, or excuse me, ten small, one-bedroom studio apartments would increase the traffic flow versus a building that was seeing fifty to sixty cars routinely, very busy, bustling businesses. So I think the traffic argument, I struggle to understand. I'm not a traffic, I'm not giving you a traffic study. I'm giving you anecdotal evidence of my experience. What other, I'll say, you know, and I think this is, this board works really hard, and I appreciate all the effort and the effort that goes into each one of these applications. But it sort of goes without saying, when you look at the nature of this application, that aesthetically, they're not changing the neighborhood. This isn't, they're not changing the exterior of the building. They're improving, I would say, in a lot of ways, the way it looks from the street. I give, we're just the sort of conduit to the application, but you can see the improvement in green space. You can see, you can, I think, make a fair assumption that the maintenance of that building will be done at a higher level with people there, and from all outward effects, it will appear to not change the character. And I give a lot of credit to the neighbors that spoke passionately about how much work has gone into this West Harwich District. That's incredible that they feel as strongly as they do about their neighborhood, but I think they should feel great about the fact that the aesthetic nature of this building will be preserved, the character of the neighborhood will not change outwardly at I won't respond to the noise in the crowd, but I will say, one thing that I did find interesting last time was this argument that there needs to be commercial space. You go up and down that stretch, there's ample commercial space for rent right now. There's a pantry as you come in on your rate, that's been for rent for years. Nobody will rent it. There's an entire complex across the street from us. Some would call it a strip mall. There's six empty commercial units in that building. I don't have to talk about Bishop's Terrace or the Irish Pub. I think everybody's pretty aware of how empty and desolate those particular projects are. So please, there are plenty of commercial space. Nothing speaks better than the market. The market tells you what is needed. The market shows you what is needed. What is needed, and I'll finish with what Attorney Tardif said. I grew up here. I'll tell you my story. I was twenty-five years old. I graduated from law school in Boston. I wanted to move to the Cape. I didn't have any money. I was an assistant district attorney. They don't make anything, but I wanted to start my career here. And I was fortunate enough to find a one-bedroom rental that allowed me to start my career here. And as I grew, and as I got bigger, and as I was able to eventually buy, that was the pathway. So we talk about the future of our community, you know? You read it on the community sites, all this talk. Where are those people going to live? Where are the new police officers? My brother-in-law has a police chief in neighboring town. Where are the young firefighters? One of my best friend's police chief and deputy police chief in a neighboring town. This is the housing for them, nurses, firefighters, teachers. And is it the end-all housing? Is it the place where you raise your family? Maybe not, but it's step one, and without step one, there can never be step two. So, thank you for listening to me, and on all the levels, I would suggest that this application is appropriate, and I'd ask that you to approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thanks, Matt. And also, if I could ask Mike Ford to say a few words, he's also one of the owners over there, but he also has some history about the District of Critical Planning Concern, which became the West Harwich Special District, and specifically at the Cape Cod Commission portion of it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Board. Mike Ford. I rise not in any official capacity, but simply in my individual capacity to speak to you tonight. I have been an owner of one of the units there for over twenty years, together with Mr. Stinson and Mr. Kelly, Mr. Eaton, and others. And I echo everything that Matt had to say. The one thing I will tell you, anecdotally, about the change from office to residential that's proposed, is when I told my wife about it, she said, "Well, given the hours that you've been there over the last twenty years, you've kind of lived there, haven't you?" And, I mean, yours is really a residence already, so maybe it's just nine that are being changed. And I didn't want to admit to working that along, but I do remember a number of evenings of being there late, and when the police would pull in and, "Mr. Ford, everything all right?" And I, "Yeah, we're just working late tonight." So, in any event, we'll miss the building, but I'm not going to go through what Matt told you about what happened to the building, but it put us in a difficult position. And I, like Matt, had followed very closely the West Harwich District when it was formed, and when the DCPC came about, and frankly, didn't oppose it. In fact, once I read through it and found that the real purpose was to protect the historic homes, particularly the captain's homes that are there and the wonderful history that goes along with them, I ended up being a supporter and voted for it. And I did so, however, realizing that, on its face, the bylaws that came out the other end made it very clear that the intent of the district was to preserve the historic homes and to incentivize their reuse, their retention, preservation, according to the bylaw, creative reuse, changes of use, expansions, all to the extent possible. And I, like others who were here and spoke passionately at the last meeting, I'm in favor of the preservation of those historic homes and always have been, and I would also support if those historic homes became part of a National Register District. And there are buildings, obviously, within that geographic area, that if it became a district, would be non-contributing buildings, and I'd suggest to you that the building we're in would be a non-contributing building, because it has no historical significance, no historical detail. So I went and looked at the zoning bylaw when it was proposed and saw that our building could continue, albeit on a conditional use, to be able to use, be used for at least four purposes by special permit, including a restaurant, which none of us obviously had any interest in, commercial, it's not set up, designed to be a retail store in any respect, or multifamily. The other use is multifamily and mixed use. It's not set up for mixed use either. It's not designed for that. It's not designed for commercial on the first floor and something else on the second floor. But it is able to be converted with just interior changes, taking the units that are there and making them residential units. And for that reason, seeing that that was a reserved use, and frankly, an asset to this particular building, I supported the zoning district as well. Now, to hear others get up and say that this is inconsistent with the purposes of the district, I'll have to tell you, surprised me at the first hearing. I frankly was shocked, because it seems to me to fit right in. And I did see a letter that came in yesterday from John Ideman, who I hope all of you had a chance to read. John is, is an experienced land use regulator, both as a planner and, I think John was actually the-
Former planner here.
Former planner here, but John was also the chief regulatory officer of the Cape Cod Commission when the DCPC was created and went through the commission and so forth. And so I hope you had a chance to look at that, because I certainly couldn't express in planning terminology the way John did and found every reason that this is consistent with what the initial county ordinance was and the end result in the zoning. Now, I did hear others get up and say at the last meeting that somehow, the use might be inconsistent with the purposes, because there were all these residential units that were being formed, from the Dennis Line all the way back. And frankly, other than the schoolhouse out behind us, I haven't seen any that have been permitted, not through this board. There's a lot of talk, there's a lot of, "Oh, I'm going to bring this in," or "I'm going to bring that in." And when we sat down as a group and thought about this changing to multifamily, it became clear to us that this building was uniquely situated for that. Why? Because it's already there. It only requires being done on the inside, a quick delivery time, we've got an experienced person who can do that, with a good reputation, and one that keeps up the property. So to us, it was entirely consistent, and given the fact that it's not an historic structure, it doesn't in any way interfere with the intent of the, of the West Harwich District itself. You asked at the last meeting, charged your planning staff with looking into what effect, if any, would the West Harwich District regulations have that you hadn't considered at the first meeting? And I commend the planner for a very thorough memo this time, and she looked at all of these various things and came to the same conclusion that frankly, we did back when we first started to look at what options we had and what options would fit with this district. So we tried very hard to come up with something that did fit with the district, fit with the condition of the building, a need that Harwich has, and that the building is already there. It's not some project where somebody wants to build a whole bunch of condominiums or a whole bunch of housing that's all brand-new. It's there, the building can be converted fairly easily. So I've probably said too much, but I wanted you to be aware of what our thought process was, that we are supportive of the West Harwich District. I've been there for many years, worked there for a long time, and voted to support the DCPC and voted to support the change in the bylaw when it came about. And frankly, we believe this is something that is consistent with that, and we would hope that you, as a board, would find that we've touched all the bases for the special permits under the various sections and to grant us our relief. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford.
Thank you. As Attorney Ford indicated, you have that letter from John Ideman. I'm not going to repeat his credentials or, you know, what he says in the letter. I think it speaks for itself, it's very supportive. We've also reviewed your staff report, and it's very supportive of every aspect of the project and agrees that it does not conflict with the purpose of the West Harwich Special District, and it does promote smart growth, land use best practices. So the bylaw is there in place, voted on by the residents of the Town of Harwich at, presumably at a town meeting. It was the result of a lot of work over at the Cape Cod Commission as well, a lot of people here. I believe, Mr. Chairman, you were involved as well. And so I think it's, it was very carefully thought of, very carefully thought out, and this type of use is really not what was objectionable. I think what the intent of that zoning bylaw was to keep architectural and historic resources in the area the way they were. This is not one of them. This is not historic or architectural resource, and it does not appear, the way this bylaw is written, to ever, it was ever thought of, to impact uses. There was a list of uses that were allowed, and they're all listed here, including hotels and motels by right somehow. And then, it also allowed four types of uses by right, as long as they were in a historic building, multifamily, retail, restaurant, mixed-use, commercial, residential developments. So it allows those as long as there is a historic shell supporting them. The special permit uses were listed at four of them, multifamily, retail, restaurant, and mixed use, if they were being reused in another building. So it can't be that the uses were the thing that was objectionable under this bylaw, and therefore, it can't be in derogation of the purpose of the bylaw. I think we're going to leave it there for now. If you have any questions about the actual project, Christian Davenport is here as well, Mr. Davenport is here as well. I think that we have met the requirements under the special permit sections, I think it's fifty-four, fifty-five, and one fifty-four. I believe we meet all of them. We hope that you agree. This is a good project, and it will really do a lot for this area. That's something that we believe. So I thank you for the time to present tonight.
Thanks, Mr. Tardif. Christine, would you like to weigh in? No need to revisit all the, you know-
I'll spare you-
Spare me the repetition on the location and the, you know.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the public and the applicant. At the last public hearing, I was asked to look at the West Harwich Special District regulations, and I did want to highlight that since the project, they did modify the site plan and to reduce the parking from forty to thirty-four, and with that, they have increased a number of the landscaping improvements. They also did provide more lighting, low lighting for downward shielded, and additional common outdoor space for the tenants. And relative to the West Harwich Special District, the section for a change of use is allowed to multifamily as a special permit, as a special permitted use through the Planning Board. And I did want to emphasize that seventy-two Route twenty-eight was not identified as one of the historic structures that's in the West Harwich Special District zoning regulations. And overall, the project, the change of use from commercial to multifamily is consistent with best practices for smart growth and infill development. And I did want to emphasize that there is a great, there is a serious need for this sort of housing in the town, as well as on the Cape. And the, the change in use from commercial to multifamily will also be a reduction in traffic. So I do think there are positives to this project, and it's, it's very important that we encourage repurposing and reuse of existing buildings. And I think overall, there will be a positive economic benefit to not only the residents who will be served by this sort of housing, as well as the Harwich community as a whole. The, I also think- The—I also think that the applicant's offer for limiting the short-term rental use is also a positive to the project. And in addition to their offer for additional—again, the additional lighting and some of the other detailing is also positive and consistent with our site plan review and multifamily special permit requirements. And I did include all of the regulations in my staff report, and if you have any other questions, please let me know.
Very good. Thank you so much. I'd like to invite the public to address the board at this time. Please step up. I don't know if we have a sign-up sheet. If we don't, there is—
There is a sign-up sheet.
Okay. Please sign up at some point, but you're welcome to address from the podium, announce with your name and location in town.
My name is Lou Urbano. I live in West Harwich. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's always difficult to speak after three astound attorneys, but I'll do my best. I thought that the people that were here at the last meeting expressed themselves quite well. I don't think that anyone that I heard first said that housing wasn't needed. I believe that the statements were that there was a much—there was a lot of housing planned in that small of a footprint. And we can go back and watch the movie, but again, I'm not here to refute attorneys. I wouldn't dare to do that. There's a couple of—also, I have one more thing, and then I'll move on to what I really want to speak about. Thirty-one days? When we approve housing rentals, don't we do year-round rentals? Why isn't it for a year? So, that's a question I have. Second, I really wonder how many police chiefs are going to live in a studio apartment? How many nurses? I just—that's a statement that's made every time I go to a housing meeting, and I hope that's true, but I haven't seen these statistics. It's just something that's thrown out to bring emotional appeal. So, I'll just put that out there. Now, on behalf of the project, let me do it a different way. I'm not opposed to the project. I'm opposed to how it's being presented. The special district is more than a set of rules that are written down. It's more than historical houses. It's in order to bring economic development to that strip of ground. To that point, the state is spending millions upon millions of dollars to put a streetscape in with brick sidewalks, lighting, trees, all to bring economic development in. There's more than just listing, you have to have such a setback, you have to—there's more than that. If I were presenting this project, that's another way of doing it, from a positive, I might have come here and said, here is the special district and everything that the special district entails and wants, and here's how my project is going to add to that district, not how it's going to squeeze in there, or not it's okay. That's why there's a special permit. It's just not a permit. It's a special permit. So, how is this going to enhance what's there? I don't know. It could, but I haven't gotten that answer. All I've gotten the answer is that it'll help housing. I agree. So will the 27 units that are being planned. These—this is just a planned unit. They don't have a permit yet, do they? So, it's 10 planned units. The units in Dennisport, they're being built. You can drive by there. You can see them. But we have an area that we're trying to make special, not for today, but for history's sake, to bring back an area the way it was. I don't know if anyone has had the chance to go to the Facebook page. There's a video that's on there right now, and it presents what the view of the special district really is and what the people would like to see, a true vision, not just a little peg that may or may not fit in, not just a rule or regulation, but what do the people in town see as a vision? And I ask how this building fits into that vision. It may, but you know what? Maybe in order to fit into the vision, it has to give up something or do something. I don't know. I don't know what—how it's going to enhance, but in order to give a special permit, I think there has to be an add-on if it's a special district. Give me a reason for doing it. I thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Urbano. Anybody else from the public would like to address the board?
Good evening. Sally Urbano, West Harwich. Not sure where to begin here, but first, I really would like to say thanks to Mr. Ford, Chris. I appreciate him. I sat next to him many times at town meeting. He's always solid and respectful, and I listen to his ideas and I understand and respect those ideas. I don't like when someone tries to tell me how I should feel. That's not a good sales approach. I also would like to reiterate, because I'm one of the ones that said this, I never said we don't need housing. I said specifically that we had approached the vision of the DCPC, and that vision said that there were already multiple types of housing within that area. I also—I'm confused about the recommendation from a realtor. That really didn't help me any. And I wonder—I know with the DCPC, you read through that, and it's kind of difficult to get the feeling from that, and that's why we've been asking for Sarah Kordoff to come down and speak with us. And she tells us that there are many and more meat to this whole thing than just what you read in the guidelines. And so, I was wondering, is this—is there a possibility that we refer this to the Cape Cod Commission so that they can do a DCPC overview with us? Is that a possibility? That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Urbano. Anybody else from—
Good evening. Karen Horn, West Harwich. And after several lawyers and Mr. Urbano, I really don't know how well this is going to go, but I'm going to give it my best. I can just speak as someone who's familiar with short-term rentals. I don't care what anybody says, 31 days is a short-term rental. We need year-round housing. We do not need winter rentals, and then the tenants are kicked out so that they can make more money with a summer rental, weekly or daily. So, being told that, don't worry, we're going to put in this guarantee that it won't be less than 31 days, does absolutely nothing for me, and I don't think it does anything for our neighborhood. We do not need more short-term rentals, 30 days, 31 days, 50 days. They're all short-term. We need year-round housing. You talk about workforce housing. There's all these terms we use now, but the year-round is—that word is being left out all the time, and that is my greatest concern. So, I would really like that to be addressed, and I do not think that adding that clause is acceptable or does in any way push this forward in our minds. The other thing I'd like to address is, if we're talking about 10 one-bedroom, eight one-bedroom, and two studio apartments, I'm not a mathematician, but I can do some basic math. A one-bedroom apartment does not need four parking spaces. So, to tell us that, oh, we've cut out six spaces, now we're only going to have 34, that is still three-point-something cars per apartment. So, are we going to have three people in each bedroom? I don't—I just don't understand how you can justify this many parking spaces. What it tells me is you do intend many of these apartments to be, in most people's opinion, short-term rental, because 31 days, as I said, is in fact, short-term. So, like Lou said, I agree, we need housing. I'm not 100% against this because I think we need more answers before I can say I'm for or against it. I don't think we're getting answers that we need or that many of us have asked for. So, until we get some of these answers—and I will address—I don't know the specifics of permit versus special permit, but the fact that the word "special" is in there tells me they're trying to push something through. I don't know if that's really what that term means, but it certainly raises flags for me and some others that were not able to be here this evening. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Horn. Anybody else here to address, please?
Marie Anderson, West Harwich. And I feel much like the previous speaker. I had exactly the same notes. I'll just start by saying, if this project were for year-round residences and the parking was reduced to a reasonable amount, I would feel entirely different about this, knowing that we had a stable neighborhood addressing the kind of issues that the opening remarks spoke to, the need for housing. I'm no different than the lawyer who's—you know, my first one-bedroom apartment was under I think about how much the town has changed in 35 years. I remember my unit—my house is oddly shaped, and I wanted to add—I wanted just to quote "square it off," and I had to come before the boards. It was a fight for one bedroom, worries about adding to the school, adding to—and now, all I hear is how much more housing we need. And I remember—so, I can't come here like the Davenport and tell you how much money I spend in the town on taxes and how much property I own. I had a small place, still a small place. And I just see that the difference between the fight I had to go through for one-bedroom and how easily it is for people to come in and add whole buildings full of multifamily There is a difference between sort of a commercial use and where people come and go during the day, and then in the evening, they're gone. The weekends, they're gone. It's quiet. When we have—if we have year-round housing, again, it's an established neighborhood versus short-term rentals, people coming and going, and that does average out to almost three and a half cars per bedroom. And that seems a lot, even to have spaces for visitors. There was the mention of—it's just speculation about these other developments, but the town is saying, right here, how much we need this. So, I—it's hard for me to envision someone saying no to any of these developments. And they are all happening in one small area, all these plans. And when you looked—I mean, at the regional vision map that's on the planning board site, it's in the West Harwich Village area, a village area. Additionally, the concerns of the septic and sewer, the Herring River. My daughter lives in a small town where such development has been brought in, and people stood before the planning board, oh, sure, we're not going to impact fire, water, and now the wells are running dry. The police and fire are always responding. So, this is one small development, and if this was it year-round, and the lighting—I looked at the poles, all those poles, it sounds like the poles are not going to be high, but, you know, it's already hard to have evening darkness in that area. So, again, what I said earlier and what others had said was, it isn't that we don't think there isn't a need for housing, but I don't believe we need a lot of short-term rentals. And what we need is year-round, because if those are the people working in the retail spaces, working for the town, working for other small businesses, that would give people a place to live, and it would be stable. And I think that's what I came to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Yes. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Maria Mahoney. I'm a direct butter to the proposed project and reuse. I'm going to probably say much of what everyone has said, but I just want to say it again because I want to make sure everyone who has to make a decision is listening to what the community has to say. We have an explosion—explosive expansion going on in West Harwich. As a resident for nearly 50 years, I have not encountered anything such as this in the town anywhere. The corridor has historically been a mixed-use neighborhood servicing year-round seasonal and visitor population. For years, a community group has been trying to revitalize the area with an eye to history and preservation, however, called under the umbrella of Captain's Row. However, it seems that the town is more interested in calling it Apartments Row. Last year, there was a conversion of a vintage schoolhouse on Bell's Neck Road. The project expanded from its initial vision, and it must be noted that there was previously denied an application for a maritime museum because of a plume in the water supply. Now, that unit or that building is around 12 apartments. I lost track because it changed en route. Now, there are proposals for multi, the Baptist Church, the Baker Property, and what—up the street, we have the Irish Pub that will be in the mix at some point, and also Bishop's Terrace. The negative impact from such development is aggressive. Increased traffic, emergency personnel needed, pollution from cars and deliveries, increased taxation on water systems and pollution due to extensive septic use. With a bunch of offices, we don't have the septic use as 12 apartments, 10 apartments with bathrooms and washers and dishwashers, and you know the rest. Increased blacktop for parking, which impacts temperature changes. And we're going to have 40 spaces, now 36 spaces, plenty of space for trailers, mobile homes, boats, you know, what people collect and park if they have space. And all of this is in less than a quarter-mile from 250 acres of protected wetlands and woodlands in the Bell's Neck Conservation. This area is a jewel of the town that attracts locals and visitors who respect the area in mindful ways. Perhaps more importantly, the expansion of apartments ignores the true threat of the community of Harwich, as none are planned to service low- or middle-income populations, seniors, or veterans. It's just apartments. Nor are there limits to short-term rentals. Well, today, there are limits, 31. That is not—that is still a short-term rental. I know a little bit about real estate, and one year is what would be considered a full-term rental and beyond. Some of them, two years, you know, elsewhere, two-year rental. To be clear, without such protections, the town blatantly signals that the town is tone-deaf to the residents, the community, and the neighbors who live here. It is extremely likely—I just—I'm sorry, I'm repeating something here, but on I go. And still yet to come is—I mentioned the Baptist Church and the—you know, the other two big, huge properties, 2.2 acres over at the Irish Pub that's— That's ripe, ripe, ripe for development. As an aside, is the plume no longer an issue for drinking water in this area? Clean drink water is essential for community. On the subject of public safety, traffic fatalities have increased on Cape Cod recently, which is an opposite trend nationwide. Adding cars have proven to correlate to this increase in crashes. The residents require our planning boy, board to focus on long-range planning. Not every contractor who comes before you can be permitted to do what they want to do. And, and, and to, I guess that's pretty much it. So, so do we want to change our seaside village to Boston or Brooklyn? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Mahoney. Anybody else from, would like to address, please?
Good evening. How are you? Thank you for listening to me.
Please identify your name and...
My name is Susan Stinson.
Thank you.
And I'm one of the owners at 72 Route 28. I also have had experience being a landlord. And when I look at West Harwich and I look at the beautiful community it is and the beautiful Seacopton's homes that are there, I also see empty strip malls. I see businesses gone out of business. The pharmacy, the pantry, the potted uranium, the Irish pub. And in order for these commercial businesses to survive, they need community. They need people living in the community. People aren't going to come out from, in from outside to go to the White Hen Pantry or to go to the Potted Uranium. It's within the town and within the area. So we need people. And yes, there are other areas that might be looking to develop, but they may face the same hurdles that we are facing. And I implore you to consider a simple, ready-to-go, not something that's in the future or, or, or a dream, but something that's ready to go and can bring people into the community to support the businesses there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stinson.
Hi, my name is Donna Tavano. I'm a resident of Harwich Port. Just a couple of comments on things that have been said tonight, beginning with Mr. Urbano's comment about wondering that a police chief might be starting out in a one-bedroom apartment, which is not the case. A police chief wouldn't be. But certainly, and that could have been misspeaking on your part, but certainly... So, however, however, I'm quite familiar with the police, having worked with them for over two decades. I have a son that's a fire chief in Chatham. I'm very familiar with housing issues with these people, with young teachers. Many of them are living with their parents because there is no place for them to live. These are local kids that grew up here. Other ones, years ago, not too long ago actually, there was a requirement for police officers to live in the town in which they worked. And there's a lot of good reasons for that. They tend to be more responsible to the people that they're working and living with. I think in Boston and other areas, they have those requirements. They had to suspend that in Harwich and probably many of the other towns because there was no place for these police officers beginning to live. Some of them now actually live off Cape and have to come on Cape. And it's not great in an emergency when you're calling for overtime for all that sort of thing to occur. So I, I want you to realize that there is in fact, I don't know whether this is fair market value, affordable, what this is, but there is certainly, for beginner-starting homes, there is a need for housing for all of our young professionals that, that are here. I also want to say that I love the idea of restoring these houses. It's a wonderful thing. My good friend Judy Ford has worked so hard with the South Harwich Meeting House. But I also know West Harwich, over the last few decades, I've been here 50 years, has had a sketchy history. We had, there's a little motel there now, I don't even know what the name is. It's tucked in, it was, used to be the Blue Whale. Well, we used to go there all the time to the Blue Whale for not-good things. There were another couple of...
You sure you want to say this on YouTube?
No, well, I'm not, you know, it's a long time ago, whatever, whatever.
Financial limitations may not have...
No, no. But there, there were other places in West Harwich that are on 28 that there have been not great situations with. It seems to me, Davenport has been around a long time. When I see their houses mixed in neighborhoods, their apartments, whatever, they always seem to keep them up. I know people who've lived in them. They've been a responsible manager of, of those places. Also noted one thing. It was mentioned originally, I believe, that one of the uses for this could in fact be motels or hotels, if I heard that correctly. And if that is in fact true, that's certainly a short-term rental. And frankly, I think that anybody who would be lucky enough in this initial housing to get one of these apartments or condos or houses would thank their lucky stars and certainly would not be leaving after a year. They would be probably staying in there for a good few years till they got established and could maybe afford one of these McMansions that they're building all over Cape Cod. As we know, we don't, there are so many people, especially during COVID, who have stayed here, their second homes. These are people from off Cape, never lived here, just for the summer or a little bit. They now stay here. They've taken up all the housing that is possible for people. And I, I would just say that in terms of the economy, I don't know what you think this, a big economic engine that would be coming into that area. I love the Dollar Store, believe me, I'm a poster child for that. But I don't want the Dollar Store there. I was glad when it was proposed and, and that didn't happen. And as far as the other housing, I think I heard earlier that, yes, there's a lot of talk, but these people seem to be first in line. So whatever happens later, maybe some of those things will be turned down. But we definitely need housing. And, and as far as the cars go, a lot of these people belong, young professional couples, teachers, police with husbands or wives, they will need at least two cars. Let's face it, everybody has two cars nowadays unless you're older or really old and you've decided to share one, but it's two cars. And then if they have guests at all, you're adding another car, you know, and maybe two if you have two guests. And next thing you know, you do need a certain amount of parking there. So I think I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tavano. Anybody else from the public who wish to address the, the board?
Kathy White, West Harwich. I just want to say that I agree with many of the previous speakers, the Urbanos and many of the others who put it all very succinctly. There's just going to be way too much density proposed. Well, there already is proposed and in the works for West Harwich. And I know there are tax incentives for converting commercial to residential, and maybe that's one of the main reasons that, you know, the owners want to do this. But I don't think it's the right use for this property. And it does, it still is questionable, all these parking spaces and the 31-day, you know, long-term rentals as they, they're not short-term according to them, but they are. So I just want to, as I say, to agree with many of the other speakers that I'm also against this, the way it's been proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Ah, yes. Unless there's anybody else that wants to speak. Okay, fine. Then we will have you next, and we need to hear from the board. Oh, do we have anybody online? It looks like we have three. Okay. Thank you.
Marie Gunnerson, again, a butter in West Harwich. The previous, previous speaker spoke fervently for the project, but I feel is in agreement with what a number of us are saying, that, that what West Harwich needs is, is housing for people who intend to live there and make it a community. And so while we might not agree on everything, I think that's, that was the point that I wanted to make sure. And the last speaker spoke to the tax incentives. So, like, I'm, I'm not clear if it can be rehabilitated for housing. Why couldn't it be rehabilitated for all these professionals who, who were, who were there? I mean, they were there. If my house got damaged, it'd be fixed and I'd continue to live in it. My business was damaged, I fixed it, and I continued to do business there. So, again, it's, and, and to that parking. So, you know, it said 15 spaces are required. So your, your calculations, I'm not sure what the property... I mean, when you have so many units, you have a, you have a formula. So many cars per unit. And they were saying, well, 15 are required, but we're doing a great favor to the town. We're putting in 40. And, you know, and, and I was surprised that wasn't questioned the very first time. There were no questions from the board. So, but even with, you know, okay, there's two cars, the studio, I don't know how many people are going to live there. That's still, you know, 10 units, times two, that's 20. Okay, so, you know, what are the chances that all 10 are going to have a guest at the same time? Not great. So, but, so do we need 35? I still think that, that the, that the number of parking spaces and the short-term possibilities show are in contradiction to what has been said that the town needs. Permanent housing for people getting a start. Because short-term rental means that's taken away from them. They can't use it. Thank you.
Thank you. Want to acknowledge anybody who's online who'd like to speak up? Is that Kayla back there? Is anybody raising their hand? Or we have observers? Nobody, seeing none? Like to entertain some discussion from the board now? Yes?
How many spaces are existing at the property?
How many? I'm sorry.
Existing in...
Parking spaces?
Parking spaces in the current state, how many?
Forty, forty-some. I believe it's over 40. I don't, I remember, to be honest, on top, we counted at one point.
So you're not adding, you're, it's more...
Reducing.
One thirty-four.
Reducing and probably looking to not have to rip up the pavement, et cetera. So it's, it's not that you're trying to add parking spaces.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay.
I do, I do wonder why so many spaces are, I mean, other than not wanting to tear up parking, why so many spaces are, are being proposed for this? Because it is quite excessive, I think, for the proposed use.
Well, the, the way your town bylaw reads, first of all, it acts as a minimum. So we are required to have 15. And with, with a one-bedroom, if it's a professional couple, you are probably going to have two, two cars. So you have to have a little bit of leeway with guests as well. If, we can never win with, with parking because it's a minimum requirement. Usually we can never meet the minimum. And now we are exceeding it. And, you know, I just don't understand really what, what the, what the issue is. We're reducing it from what it is. The lot coverage that's there currently, we are maintaining. Plus, we're going to have an additional 500 gallons of...
Cool. Additional subsurface drainage for 5,000 square feet that's not existing currently. So we'll be able to make an improvement on the stormwater drainage system that's never had an issue. We're making an additional contribution to that to make sure stormwater's handled, subsurface.
But, but additional parking spaces is, I mean, we, we eliminated six from last time to add for more space for the, the residents. I don't, I don't think it's going to increase any volume at the place. It is what it is. We're just following the formula.
Carrie?
This, my question may not directly affect the issues at hand, but I'd kind of like to understand, it looks like you've got, what were, are there nine condos now? Was it nine?
Ten.
Ten. Ten individual owners. Are they going to consolidate their properties into one title and then sell that title to Davenport? Or have, I'm sure you'll be able to find a lawyer to help you with this, but... Is, I, I just want, I'd kind of like to understand the, the mechanics of ownership from what it is now to what it would become if this project gets approved.
Ten, ten condominium unit owners have agreed to sell their units to the applicant. And once the applicant has all 10 of those units, they can take the condo away and have it as one property. They could leave it the way it is if they wanted to, except that it would be a lot of gymnastics because the size of the units that are currently there are not going to equal the units that are going to be constructed. So the walls are all different. I don't think that there's any need for condominium form of ownership there at all, but, you know, that's up to the applicant.
So is it, are all of the proposed units going to be rentals?
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Alan, any questions?
The, the six spaces that were taken away, what, in that top corner there? So that's going to be...
Green space.
Green space?
Correct.
Not paved?
No.
So, I would like to make some comments about this. Having been involved in the special district formulation and the language of it, and also having spent 10 years on this board and five years chairing it, I feel like this is one of these inflection points of the board. And so half of what I want to say is to us, to shape the conversation that we're having here tonight and as we go forward, and half is to the, to the applicant. And the other half, the third half, is to the public. But the, there was a question that was raised by one of the individuals who spoke to us, saying, well, what is this about a special permit? Well, a special permit is a discretionary granting of a condition that otherwise does not qualify for receiving the permit to, to enact what the applicant wants to enact. And the, the language of the code of the town of Harwich in section 32555 states that our trep door for, as a board, to, to work with special permits is to understand, you know, the positive and the negative. And the negative has to do with the language they talk about as a substantial impact in section A. A substantial impact on the character of the, of the neighborhood of the town. And so the only feedback loop as a, as a board, as a town, we're the only place where the town actually gets to have a voice. And so if we don't listen to the town, we're repudiating the voice of the people who otherwise do not have any point of view on this. So I take this a lot more seriously now. Now that we're seeing a lot more special permit applications, we're seeing a lot more special permit housing applications. And it is interesting in my mind that you bring up, and particularly apt, you bring up the Housing Production Plan. The Housing Production Plan and all the demographic analysis that anticipated it over the last two and a half years, and for two years it's been public, that the demographic analysis that the, that the town hired indicates that we're looking at a 1% growth maximum for a short period of time, less than 10 years, a plateau and a decline in population. So to me, I, my big concern as the Chair of the Planning Board, and I would encourage all of us to look at this, is we have to look at kind of secular growth patterns because these are things that are not going to change over seasons. These are commitments that we will be looking at for the rest of our lives here. Now, this is not to diminish any of the applications, the applicant's wishes, but my point is that I think our long, local comprehensive plan, the Housing Production Plan, indicate that there is a, a kind of a hidden component here that we're not taking account of. And I took it upon myself to run two regressions of the material in the town annual reports from 94 to 2024, looking at six different variables in growth deltas, change in growth, rate of growth. And two of the variables were, one, the population growth, and the second variable was growth in the number of units available in town. Over 30 years, we have a almost uniform tracking. So I suspect that once we get a dual... So I suspect that once we get a, do further data analysis, we're gonna find that the, the issue of housing, as it stands up to now, is going to be changed once we understand and can fully integrate this knowledge in town. I would like to encourage us to look at what we can do in understanding and doing statistical analysis. So it was in that light that I thought that a lot of the material that I saw in Mr. Idman's application, and I've, we've had plenty of very good response with this, or interaction input from Mr. Idman as, when he was the planner and when he was on the Cape Cod Commission. And, you know, but I do find that there is a gap between the rhetoric that we are kind of like generating and the empirical reality that we're dealing with. So my belief is that what I'm hearing from the residents who decide to speak up is that there seems to be a concern for a monoculture, like a housing monoculture. You know, you can't have, despite the fact that there may be available retail spaces, there's a reason why those retail spaces are not available, because of the pricing of them. So if you look at the pricing, for instance, of what's going on at the intersection of Division and Twenty-Eighth, the old seven-eleven store, that's owned by a corporate entity. My daughter looked to rent that fifty-eight hundred bucks a month before you lock in at eleven thousand a month. That's a great write-off for them. It doesn't help us at all, right? So then we, there are also irrational players in the market who overvalue their own properties. So there's a, there are multiple reasons why we have these variables as it is, and it's up to us as a planning board to take all those variables into account, and also kind of like the structural problems in the pricing. So to me, the growth in the, the cost of these units is a function of a affordability issue as opposed to an availability issue. So this is kind of the way I'm looking at this stuff now. And based on the data that the town has, the data that the town has been publishing for, you know, since the middle of the nineteenth century, I mean, we can, we can do these things now. So my real concern is that when I say monoculture, I'm, I'm thinking of the property of fifteen or sixteen section eight units at forty Route Twenty-Eight, at seventy-six Route Twenty-Eight, there are eighteen. At ninety-nine, there are, it's another huge rental area, you know, the old captain's cargo. And then we have a habitat. We have lots of housing. We have a, a surfeit of housing, and in fact, we have a monoculture. And I think that the idea of, we have market rate, we have affordable, we have, we have the, we have the whole cross-section, we have, we have everything. So the concern that I hear the public saying, and what I hear, and also as a resident, of course, I'm not immune to it, but I see that there is a, a danger for producing a saturation of a certain type of use. And so that being, that being said with that, the, I would like to entertain a discussion about the, or have a discussion about the possibility of revisiting your rental, a negotiation of your rental restrictions. Because that, we're hearing a lot of pushback on that. We already have, you know, some, some of that kind of low monthly rentals. I think, let's talk about it. Can we, before we, on the basis of discretion, you know, grant this, we, the town is making very clear that it doesn't wanna have that. I think we ought to dance with us on this as the town for our discretionary bestowal of a special permit. This is not a check the box and get it. And there are all sorts of ways of doing this. And I think one of the interesting ways that a, that I've heard, and I don't know if anybody saw the piece on Nantucket Housing Issues in the New York Times recently, there was a wonderful piece, there was one entire section, a model, and I would think it'd be really interesting for a company with the reputation, the history, the track record of success that Davenport has, to contemplate adopting a model of this sort, where I think that it was something like, there was a kind of a rental script, where it's kind of a rental scenario, where a portion of the rent is set aside in an escrow account for purchase later. So that you encourage people to come on board, we'll take you in for a year, this is our, you know, routine, and at the end of that year, you're gonna have X amount of money toward a down payment toward your ownership. So, you know, I don't know if that's, obviously, that's unusual, and that's a pretty far-out there request, but can we have a discussion about altering your rental, please, rental arrangement, number one? And number two is whether or not you're willing to play ball. I love the idea of the onion lamps and the discussion of the plantings and what have you. Can we work, can you work with us and, you know, tone up what you've got so that it doesn't look like a nineteen eighty stapled-together structure and make it kind of fit more in with maybe moldings and what have you to have it, the facade, the street face conform with the neighborhood? So those are my comments. I don't know if this, you know, strikes a chord with anybody here. I'm laying it out there. I don't know if you'd wanna respond to this now, or if this is worth revisiting?
If I could, maybe we can just take a quick break.
Why don't we, you wanna take a break till eight o'clock? It's eleven minutes, is that sufficient?
Sure.
Kind of have motion for us to take a break for eleven minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye? Thank you.
Thanks.
I need some water.
Oh my God, not at all.
Can you have a chance with the cameras turned so we can see it? I know you were all needing to see it.
Oh, sure. Absolutely, come on. Will you take a look?
Or just put it here so we can look at it? Yeah, thank you. It's like, couldn't see anything.
Eight weeks out of there, it's certainly not a year. You may end up a bunch of drunk teenagers in the house next to you. But you may not always. You might have a family that has a chance to go home and they have their own place a year where they come to the cafes and the kids, you know, probably get ice cream and go to the beach and get in sand. Well, I'm not saying, I'm thinking, you know.
It's something about the student.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I don't think that this, yeah, I don't think this is developed by me. It's very tense. Yeah. I don't know. I don't see what I'm doing. I don't know where they're at more than I know. I don't think that's their business model. And so if, you know, if somebody says that they need to add something to their business model to improve their intent. I would not necessarily ask them to do that. Yeah. People. You know, you can't just walk the record. You know, house of public. But all we know is we've got some. It's like that destiny. I'd be like, but you know, I'd be very. But I think it's a rock and roll rule, right? You literally work on, allow that to go in. I'll say, you know, you can talk back then. I had to turn the mic off. I think when I hear this stuff, it's like a strict, kind of, stable. Uh, so, uh, we sold our house, so you know, we just do our best. That is, I think. And I just kind of, that's kind of where some people. I think that, you know, we could get it out there that it appeases some of the, some of the people. I just feel like I have objections to it. I will, and that's. I've been talking to somebody yesterday. I've, I've watched the, I guess we were meeting on the twelfth of August. I watched the program today and watched, watched it happen. You know, that did come up, but it didn't seem like it was like something that we have hearing where everyone gets upset. This is, this is long because of this. They always want.
No, but that's a thing. Well, this is still, this is good example.
It's a little, it's a little more. It just doesn't seem like that's necessarily the intention. It's almost wrong. It isn't that. The actual law is seven ten for short term rentals. Six, you should cut that. It's a, I don't see the.
What it's all around. I approach to that. I go, I guess, it's, it's basically. I mean, it's all. Oh, fine.
A lot of times too. I mean, I've had a lot of mine, or, or, probably on the whole Cape, but a lot of people in my demographic. I mean, yes.
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to steer the conversation in a way that, you know, if I'm.
Sometimes in the future, my next door neighbor, just have me unable to go to sleep at two o'clock in the morning because they have a party. I bet she's trying to get the flowers or the flowers left. You know, one of them.
To play with. No, it's a trade off.
I have my personal idea of forcing.
Makes sense, I mean. Yes, well, that's right. Exactly.
Because. Of what?
It's your time.
Because I don't want to be a convenience. And that, exactly. But, you know, you just go, I don't like this thing that, I mean, people can, you know, do a lot of it. I probably never did that. But it's the fact that they have it.
No. I do, I did.
About some of the law, like demolition, to be able to, you know, get law from what they want to do. And just, you know, building, probably. I mean, I, a lot of it has me, how they want to change, to be something that I have to give some serious thought to before I violate even up. It's not, you said. I don't know. I just wonder if I get caught and punished in this country so much, am I doing something I'm not supposed to? You know, years ago, back twenty or thirty years, I'd be, I'd be like, ah, not gonna even get caught. Do whatever I want to. That's all I need to know to move forward.
How was the rest of your summer?
It's okay. I, um, I think I was telling Ann, I was here, I was helping my son with a, a run a regatta in New York. And I kind of made a bad decision.
Uh, I think they need.
In a boat, a small, inflatable boat. And I decided it'd be fun to ride up on the bow. And there, bumping down over the waves. And I came down on my back and I just didn't see. That kind of ruined the last couple of weeks. I had a week, the week I got back, I was on the couch. Slowly, I couldn't be able to get up. Still isn't.
Yeah.
So, the rest of. Uh, I've never been to, maybe it's nine.
I've been to several. Mustard. But.
But, I mean, is it, I always get the impression that you once start, never stop. They'll always have to adjust you, in order to make it right. Definitely something to consider, because I've never had back problems. I know, everyone I know has had back problems. Everyone thinks, really? They fuse the discs.
No, 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 they sort of shove it back in.
Really?
But I had, I had this, I had this, like, who threw it at this guy?
No. My dad had it.
I thought I'm just gonna do like everyone else. I mean, when I said it was like a hundred and fifty years and my father was like, oh, my. The mine was so cute. It was looking at a little.
Uh? Well, somebody I talked to when I first got here told me that, you know, if it was a serious, uh, back on an herniated disc or something.
Yes.
Feel it in my leg.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great.
And that never happened.
Or lumbar, exactly.
It's, it ended up in my hip.
I had like in my left hip. The print paint first started up everywhere in the lower back.
Well, that's where my mine was. It was sort of like right here. It wasn't really in the.
Yeah.
Good evening. Um, so, I, I, we discussed, you know, with Mr. Davenport also and Christian. Um, first of all, you have to understand that their business model is year round rentals.
Right.
That's what they do all over the Cape. That's what they endeavor to do. But the flexibility to know that, if it is not working out, uh, is something that they need, uh, in, in a number of different ways. Uh, people who are looking for housing, for example, full time housing, will rent short term. Not thirty one, not two weeks, but they need the ability to, the tenants need the ability to get out of those leases. Otherwise, they won't enter into them. So, there has to be some flexibility on that. We can tell you that that is our policy. That's, I think he, eight hundred units across the Cape, that's our, that's our goal.
Mm-hmm.
Is year round rentals. Um, I can tell you, we will endeavor to do the year round rentals here. That's what we're trying to do. Um, but there are exceptions to the rule. And sometimes we have to do that on, on both sides to make it work. And that's the business model. Um, I don't know what we can do with regard to the, um, outside of the building. Uh, because I think designing that building with a cooperative model between us would take us some time. And I think we have a, uh, we have some deadlines that we have to meet. Um, obviously, the Davenport's buildings speak for themselves. You've seen how they build them and maintain them. It's not going to be any different. It's going to be a, a good looking building. Um, the landscaping's going to be maintained meticulously, which is another reason for some of the parking area. It's just that we have crews in there at, uh, a lot during the week. Um, and we have to turn trailers around and we need that space. So, I don't know if that helps, but there is no intention to rent these things for thirty one days. I'll tell you that. Um, it's.
So, why the change in the business model for this particular unit?
It's not.
No, it, can it?
You, I thought you said the rest of your units are year round?
They are. That's the intention here, but what happens, and I, I oversee the rental operations on a day to day basis. So, what happens at times, tenants have to break their leases, they're one year, but they break them. We also give tenants the option, because ultimately, I think we talked about before, these, most of our units are what I would call a stepping stone for somebody. So, after one year of tenancy, if every, if everything's good, uh, we give the option to go month to month. Uh, some people would be looking to upgrade to a larger rental or to buy a home or things like that. Having a restriction would get, not give us the ability to allow our tenants to do that. Uh, and that's what, most people live with us for several years and then very frequently, people do go to a month to month while they're trying to buy a home and/or even upgrade to one of our own homes. Sometimes people will start in a one bedroom and work their way up to a, a single family home that we have in our own inventory, uh, if it's not purchasing a home. So, if we were to put those restrictions on, it would give, wouldn't give us the ability to do that for people.
Okay. Any other comments or from the board, questions?
I, I, I just say that, you know, to me, it's pretty obvious their intent isn't to develop this property and turn it into twelve or ten Airbnbs. Um, so, you know, I, I don't think that that needs to be put into writing. Um, I think reading between the lines, I can see that that clearly is not part of their business model. So, I'm satisfied with that, um, you know, with that kind of assurance that is implied rather than stated.
Alan, any comments?
I, I agree with Harry.
So, uh, want to close the, uh, the hearing or any further questions for the applicant? Nope. All entertain a motion to clear, uh, close the hearing?
So moved.
Second?
There's a motion in two seconds. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? unanimous, I sort of clear it. So, I think what we're looking at now is a, um, motion for, uh, to adopt proposed finding of facts on page two of. The bottom, is, would, Alan, would you care to do the, do the duties?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the following findings of fact. The applicant is Paul Tardif, attorney for Davenport Realty on behalf of West Horace Office Bar Condominium Association President Matthew P. Kelly. Two, subject property is seven twenty Route twenty eight, assessors map ten parcel F six. Three, the subject property is located Commercial Highway dash one CH one residential medium and West Horace DC PC. Four, the application for a multifamily special permit and site plan review special permit was filed with the town clerk on July ninth, twenty twenty five. Five, site plan seventy two Route twenty eight site plans by Tarja L. McGrail, sorry if I butchered that, engineer civil nu- civil number four seven five nine three tag and bond dated four fourteen twenty five revised date seven one twenty five and nine four twenty five stamped by town clerk nine five twenty five. Subsection A, plan showing proposed site plan improvement sheet dash one oh one. B, proposed sewage system plan sheet C dash one oh two. C, details sheet C dash one oh three. Number six, multifamily special permit. A, the building does, does contain three or more units with adequate entrances and bedroom sizes of one hundred twenty square feet. B, the project is on town water. C, the project meets the minimum required parking requirements. D, the project does provide common outdoor spaces, space for tenants that is consistent with multifamily special permit zoning regulations. E, the project shall comply with all Title V septic system requirements per the Board of Health. Number seven, in addition, the board finds that the site plan review, A, the proposed change in use will not adversely affect the neighborhood. B, the specific site is an appropriate location for such a use, structure or condition. C, there'll be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. D, adequate and appropriate facilities would be provided for proper operation of proposed use. This includes the provision of appropriate sewage treatment facilities, provide for denitrification when permit granting authority deems such facilities necessary for protection of drinking water, supply wells, ponds, or saltwater embankments. Eight, the proposed project is consistent with West Horace Special District based on the following reasons. A, the property is not listed as a historic structure. B, the change of use from commercial to multifamily is allowed as a special permitted use in the West Horace Special District. C, the project is consistent with the smart growth land use principles and best practices for reuse of existing building and the provision of needed additional rental housing options for the community. D, the project is located along twenty eight public transit route as well as access for bicycle and pedestrian activities. E, the conversion from commercial to residential multifamily will, will reduce traffic and trip generation according I T E trip generation rates. And F, the project will be an overall economic development benefit to the businesses in the West Horace Special District.
What does he think? I have a motion, I have a second?
Second?
We have two seconds again. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. So, I think we have a motion to vote on a, the site plan review special permits.
Yep. I'd like to make a motion to approve of the conditions case number PB twenty twenty five dash seventeen. Paul Tardif, attorney for Davenport Realty seventy two.
It's supposed to be nineteen, I think. I think it's a typo there.
Yes, sorry.
That's nineteen. Thank you.
Thank you. Twenty twenty five hyphen nineteen.
To amend that. To approve of the conditions case number PB twenty twenty five dash nineteen. Paul Tardif, attorney for Davenport Realty seventy two Route twenty eight for approval of multifamily special permit and site plan review special permit pursuant to section three twenty five dash fifty one Q and section three twenty five dash fifty five of the codes of Town of Horace. A change of use for the property located at seventy two Route twenty eight map ten parcel F six in the Commercial Highway one dash, parentheses, CH one residential medium and West Horace Special District. The decision is based on the findings of fact with the conditions of approval. One, the applicant is Paul Tardif, attorney for Davenport Realty on behalf of West Horace Office Bar Condominium Association President Matthew P. Kelly. Two, subject property is seven twenty Route twenty eight, assessors map ten parcel F six. Three, subject property is located Commercial Highway dash one CH one residential medium and West Horace DC PC. Four, the project is to convert an existing commercial building with ten commercial condominiums into ten residential apartments for year round rental units. Eight one bedroom apartments and two studio apartments. There will not be changes in the existing building's footprint. Five, the application for a multifamily special permit and site plan review special permit was filled, filed with the town clerk on July ninth, twenty twenty five. Six, site plan seventy two Route twenty eight site plans by Tarja L. McGrail, engineer, so, civil number four seven five nine three tag and bond dated four fourteen twenty five revised date seven one twenty five and nine four twenty five stamped by town clerk on nine five twenty five. Subsection A, plan showing proposed site plan improvement sheet dash one oh one. B, proposed sewage si- system plan sheet C dash one oh two. C, details, uh, sheet C dash one oh three. Number seven, pro- the proposed project does meet the criteria for multifamily special permit. Site plan review special permit is consistent with the West Horace Special District. Eight, the project is on town water. Nine, the project shall, shall comply with all Board of Health requirements for approval pertaining to Title V septic system. Ten, special permit shall not take effect until a copy of the decision bearing the certification of the town clerk that twenty days have elapsed since the filing of the, of the decision, near that no such appeal has been filed or that an appeal has been filed within such time period, is recorded in the registry of deeds and indexed under the names, name of the property owner of record and the parcel address. Eleven, the special permit shall lapse within two years, which will not include such time required to pursue or await the determination of an appeal referred to in General Law Chapter forty eight, Section seventeen from the grant thereof, if a substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced except for good cause or, in the case of permit for construction, if construction is not begun by such date except for good cause. Twelve, changes to the site not authorized under this decision will require further planning board review and modification to this decision. Thirteen, the applicant shall conform to the inspection, certification and as-built plan requirements outlined pursuant to the code of Town of Horace.
Have a motion, we have a second? Only one needed this time.
Second.
Thank you, Annie. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? I remind you that three sec- section three twenty five fifty five is how we, uh, discern these matters for vote positive or negative, according to your conscience and what the, the residents have, have said to us. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have four in favor, negative, I vote nay, vote four to one carries. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
That takes us to public meeting, section A, review and discussion of Pine Oaks four comprehensive permit draft memo to ZBA.
Mr. Chair, if I can just take a couple of minutes to give you up some items?
Yes. Yep, please, appropriate, great. Yep. Yep, got it. You get to have two, that's not fair. Here we go, great.
I'm still working on some notes, so this is just a, not really a rough, it's, uh, just a compilation of a starter, so I do apologize for that. So, before you is the, uh, site plan and road layouts for, uh, Pine Oaks Village four. And this is a project of two hundred and forty two units as a comprehensive permit through the zoning board of appeals. Uh, there are multiple waivers for the project, but, uh, just to be clear, this project will be developed over five phases. So, um, in terms of, uh, site appropriateness and.
Quick question.
Go ahead.
The, um, the end, like, what is it? Terminus post quem, the last date for the final phase, is how many years after breaking ground?
I'm not absolutely sure, but I, it's at least.
Love to hear from you, Bob.
Bob Doane, Vice President of, of, um, Cape Church Homes and Pine Oaks Villages. Um, that is all depending upon the funding cycle.
Funding cycle.
We're making an estimate that each, it would be no better than two years, no sooner, every two years that we get a funding cycle. So, that would bring it out from, you know, after your approval and then the first funding. So, we're talking at least ten years.
Ten years, is that all right? Okay. Great, thanks.
Thank you. I was going to say that, but I, I'd rather hear it from, uh, from the applicant.
Right, there you go.
Um, so, as part of the comprehensive permit, there, um, this is a special permit through the zoning board of appeals and there are very, um, narrow scope of what the town, um, or what the zoning board of appeals can condition. And they're really, um, limited to issues of traffic, public safety and environmental impacts. And we have structured the public hearing process thus far, uh, really pertaining to those issues. And I will say, uh, the applicant and, um, our peer review process has gone very well, I think, up until now. Um, and will continue to work on that. Uh, there is a limitation of a hundred and eighty days where the town will need to make a decision and that's approaching in October, uh, unless the applicant grants an extension, um, for the, uh, process. And as part of the, um, zoning board of appeals had asked boards to, uh, provide input relative for the planning board that would be pertaining to site plan, any of the parking, um, issues or parking layout as well as, uh, traffic. And I will put a caveat on the traffic that even our peer review team has said the project will not, uh, create extreme, um, traffic problems. And the state, um, really is very clear on that terminology. And so for traffic impact, they have, um, uh, recommended some oper- some mitigation options as well as an opportunity for the applicant and the town to work together to address some of the overarching traffic issues um, relative to Queen Anne Road, the intersection of Main Street and Queen Anne Road and just some of the site distances and other improvements, um, from Queen Anne Road. And so I, I've couched the, uh, the traffic issue in that context to really, um, you know, encourage the ZBA to, um, condition any, any, um, aspects or opportunities for the town and the applicant to work together for, to address traffic more broadly along Queen Anne Road. One other, um, recommendation, and maybe not, um, immediate, but to consider an assist road as, to look at that as more as a collector road. Um, should that be improved sometime in the future? And perhaps not for phases one, two, or maybe even three, but definitely, um, as this project approaches build out. VHB, um, their traffic peer review, they didn't condition, um, that, they didn't think, um, it would have, um, a huge impact on, on rerouting of the traffic, but they did say it would alleviate and help mitigate some of the potential traffic by, you know, anywhere from ten to fifteen percent, but not significantly. And so that might be something for, uh, the planning board to consider, consider, particularly where we did, um, uh, at the lot, previous meeting determined that an assist road was a private way and if there is an opportunity to make a recommendation, um, to the ZBA to consider that as another additional, uh, second access point. Cause as of right now. Because as of right now, on the site plan, it's limited to emergency access only when the project is at development. So that might be a talking, that may be an opportunity to revisit over the course of the development of the project.
So the A and R that we had our field trip on, 10 days ago or something like that, to consolidate a couple of parcels, does that just, that's just up at the very top of Anassas Road, is it?
Correct, yes.
So it's just only a few feet of that, am I, do I have that right?
It was about 800 feet.
Oh, so it's basically then comes maybe a.
But Anassas Road as a private road, and I think, Bob, the applicant did provide documentation for access, correct?
Oh, so Anassas actually starts at Queen Anne?
Yes.
Okay, so then, so that 800 feet takes it, does it take it past this boundary?
It takes it right down to where the power lines in the, right up to here from Queen Anne, because Queen Anne goes off the page.
Right, so, but I mean, I'm talking about.
But Anassas Road would come all the way down to Main Street.
No, but what we agreed on, on the A and R.
Is down to here, yes.
I'm, when I'm saying down, I'm saying south, toward, the notch toward Main Street.
Main Street, no, not towards Main Street, but right to here.
So it ends at the property line then?
Yes.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
Sorry, I.
No problem, no problem.
Okay, and Bobby, you can, you know, if you feel I'm misspeaking in any way, you can also jump in, but this has been more of an opportunity, there's been some give and take, sorry, thanks. And so for environmental impacts and particularly to the Herring River watershed, we have asked the, our environmental peer review team, T R C, to consider the watershed from several years ago as part of the Mass to Estuaries project and the potential for future development of that area. The applicant is, will install their own wastewater treatment for the entire development of the project. However, you know, another question is, how can we further mitigate any stormwater runoff in addition to any nitrogen to the Herring River watershed, which has already been identified as an impaired watershed? And when they did the build-out for the Mass to Estuaries project, the development of Pine Oaks Village 4 was not part of that analysis. So those are some other additional items to consider, and we can also comment on that. T R C's evaluation will be given to us, will be submitted tomorrow in preparation for the 17th, September 17th meeting. We have had multiple meetings on traffic, as well as site plan and civil engineering plans, particularly relative to some of the turning radiuses, the parking, that's been provided in addition to some of the parking lengths and emergency access for fire and in addition to school buses, should they be, should they go onto the property. So, so there has been significant discussion on those issues. And so for, I will also mention in those plans, the daycare, which is located at the entrance point on Queen Anne Road, has been moved to the community center. Just because there's been, there was a fair amount of discussion in terms of the queuing as well as the safety of, for the schoolchildren, for people coming and going on Queen Anne Road, so that has been moved to the other side of the development towards the community building.
So where's the community building up here?
It's in the center.
Yeah.
Ah, you got it, thank you, yeah.
May I ask you a question? The community building, like, like what's in there? Is it kind of like a, like a, kind of like our community center now, a little bit, like a mini version?
Yeah, exactly, it's where the rental office is, management office is there, and there'll be a gym, for instance, or a weight room, as well as study areas and little breakout rooms. What we did was, we did move the daycare down to that and add it on to the building to the south, and changed so that it's really daycare will be for the use of the people in the property, because one of the issues with the, having the daycare where it was, and the fact it was going to be twice as big as we were now planning, was that it would increase, increase the peak traffic substantially.
Yeah.
By eliminating that, the peak trap has been cut down by, I think it was at least 50 cars twice a day. So that was why we chose to do that.
Do the, the outdoor, I see the space for like a playground.
Yes.
Is there also like a, like a basketball court, or like?
There's nothing in the plans right now that is a topic that could come up through, that we would discuss with the zoning board of appeals.
I'm just thinking with, was it 242?
Yes.
They'll want to run somewhere, so.
Somebody's going to want to play basketball.
Yeah, someone's going to want to play, and.
Yeah, right.
That's also the, and I don't, I'll be perfectly honest, I haven't gone through Pine Oaks 3, and I haven't gone through, but like, I do see it's kind of open, so having that open space for, because it's going to be a mix of people there, I think.
Yes.
Is a big.
Right.
Is a big thing for me, like having that, so it's not, so.
We are preserving walking trails, so there's actually, the, the undisturbed area is, I believe it's 41 percent.
It was substantial.
Of undisturbed, and green space is even bigger, because you'll have local plantings and things of grasses and stuff that we have disturbed, yeah.
One of the things that I thought was interesting, I was contemplating this the other day about the traffic issue, and for a time after my divorce, I lived up in Kingsway and 6A, I don't know if you're familiar with it, it's like 450 units, one access road under 6A, never a traffic problem, it's like almost twice, so I, I don't see the traffic thing happening at all here, it's, so, unless everybody's going to school at exactly the same time, kind of a thing, but.
That doesn't happen.
Yeah, and it, well, it certainly doesn't happen in Kingsway, I'll tell you that, yeah.
So for some of the common open spaces and, you know, the overall quality of life for the residents has been given, you know, a lot of consideration. The daycare will be limited to the residents of Pine Oaks Village 4, you know, obviously for some liability, but also to Bob's point, to reduce some of the traffic implications. And so those were just some of the highlights, and I can, I'll be continuing to draft this into more of a, as I flesh this out a little bit more, if it's okay with the board, I'd like to send it to everyone, maybe on Monday morning, and if there are additional edits, if through the chair, you can send those to me and I can try and incorporate them. And I also did want to highlight that, you know, this is addressing a significant need for housing, you know, as identified in our housing production plan.
Again, I'm going to, I'm going to disagree with my, with the reading of it, but.
That's okay, that's okay. And so I did want to, you know, also talk about some of the benefits for the town of Harwich, and, you know, that this could be an opportunity to not only improve some of the traffic issues, you know, particularly along Queen Anne Road, but also that this is serving, that this will serve a great need for not only Harwich residents, but also members of the broader Cape Cod community, so.
Great, well, thank you very much on that. We, the next item on the agenda, unless there are further comments, was the minutes, which I didn't see in my packet, so.
I didn't send them out, because I realized that there were some, they needed another review.
Another pass through.
Sent them out to everyone, and then also I realized, we are very behind on meeting minutes, so what I'd like to do is do them in several packets, several sets of packets over the next several meetings.
Or what you could, if it would be easier, just schedule a light, when we have a light meeting, and just send us, you know, the batch of whatever it is, six, six or seven, and just give us a week so that we can go through, but, or four days, whatever.
Absolutely, I'll be happy to.
Whatever you, however it works easier for you.
Okay, happy to do that. I do want to give a brief update for September 23rd. We will be meeting at the 204 Cultural Arts Municipal Building at 263 South Street, you know, also commonly referred to as 204 Sisson Road. We have several items on the agenda, not only the 606 Route 28 multifamily site plan review project, we also have a site plan review project for 237 Queen Anne Road, a request for site plan review waiver by the town of Harwich for Phase 3 of the Great Sand Lakes sewer water pumping station at 15 Wales Road.
15 Wales Road?
15 Wales Road, yeah.
Help me, Wales, where, where?
It's.
It's coming up on my mental map. Any help me?
Like whale, like the.
Whale, W A L E S.
Oh, whale.
Like a country.
That whales.
Whales, yeah. Did you say whales?
I can give you the address in a moment, and we also.
We're talking about North Harwich or East Harwich, in the east or?
East Harwich.
East Harwich, okay.
And we also have a, we just received a filing for an approval not required by St. Peter's Church, and so we have a very.
Lutheran church on 137?
Yes.
Okay.
So we have a packed agenda on September 23rd. If you are not able to attend, please let me know. I will be sending out all staff reports, and I promise, I will be more diligent about getting information out as soon as I can complete it and get it off my desk. So thank you all again for your patience, I do appreciate it.
So the 23rd is everything we just said?
23rd or the 24th?
Yes.
Okay.
23rd.
23rd, okay.
And that's at the 204?
Correct.
Front and center.
Are we all eligible for everything, or? Um, yes, all seven are eligible. Mary Meslowski won't be able to attend on the 23rd, but she intends to rehabilitate herself for.
Back to the rehab, huh?
I went there today, rough.
And Harry, also I do want to give Harry a big thank you.
Kudos, yeah.
For rehabilitating, going through the process of rehabilitating to be eligible to vote tonight.
Thank you very much.
So I, I was a slacker in the beginning, and now I rehabilitated myself, and I get a compliment. Well, I'd like to thank you for a very comprehensive staff report. I was very impressed as I read through all of those items tonight for number 19.
Thank you.
I could tell it took some effort to do that, as all of them do, I'm sure, but I was sitting there going, gee, I'm glad I didn't have to do this.
Well, as I said, it's one hearing at a time for rehabilitated board members. All right, well, if that is all we have before the, oh, you have a local comprehensive plan thing to discuss, or are we, we still okay on that, treading water?
We are still okay on that. I do want to set aside some time to invite members of the local comprehensive plan, just to give us an update of the final draft, and, you know, if anyone, if the board has any comments, we have a deadline of September 30th.
Right.
For boards and committees, as well as members of the public, to provide input or comment, and we welcome that.
But we've already passed it, correct?
No, we haven't passed it yet. The planning board will hold a public hearing and have a more formal approval process, but right now.
New year.
The L C P is in a final draft, and we are in a public comment period.
Okay, great.
Yes. And there are, will be a couple of other meetings. I did reach out to Sarah Kordjev at the Cape Cod Commission. I would like to reserve either the end of October or November for her to come in and give us an overview of the West Harwich special district.
Thank you.
And the guidelines, I do think it would be very important for us to look at those regulations in addition to adopting the guidelines that were given to the town by the Cape Cod Commission. It might be an opportunity for next year to check off some zoning initiatives.
So, and those are, the design guidelines are an important thing, because it's going to help us, as we evolve the code of the town of Harwich, there are going to be places where we're going to want to do form-based as opposed to use-based codes, and the template that the commission came up with and the artwork and the language is like a good, it's really, you know, way ahead of its time, so, and they did a great job. I mean, when you look at the drawings about how do they explain massing and, you know, all the rest of it, it's going to be, I'm surprised we didn't pass that, I thought we passed that in like 2017 or something. Hey, let's do it.
Yeah, I think that would be a great opportunity. I also, the hazard mitigation plan, we will be doing a public meeting towards the end of September, and I will provide an update and a notice to everyone regarding that. Martha Hevenner from the Cape Cod Commission will, who's been assisting us, will do a presentation and an update, and we will hopefully finalize the hazard mitigation plan as well, so.
Right.
No more updates. It's just a small sample of some of the projects going on right now, so thank you.
Super. Well, before asking for a motion to adjourn, I just want to reiterate, I was really sincere about the fact that when we are facing all these special permits now, if we don't, you know, embrace what the public is saying, we're, we're not going to, we're going to lose, we're going to lose some of, I don't know what we're going to lose, I think it's, we're not fully doing our jobs, that's all I'm saying. But when they come in to complain like this, it's a real thing, I mean, this is, these are genuine expressions, it doesn't make, we do, we do not owe anybody anything unless they are by right doing, then we have to, but if there's a big pushback, we really have to take this into account, take it seriously. So that was my soliloquy this evening. Anyway, thank you all, entertain a motion to adjourn.
We're moved.
Second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?